For tonight, please stand for the invocation by Dylan Douglas and the pledge by Mr. Jim Steed.
I do, Lord, we thank you for granting us travels to this. Pray also for safety. Public servants, first responders that serve our community, especially past weekends. Pray that you would consider responders' safety in all those grieving. Pray that you would offer guidance to all of our locals, present here, not present as well.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic of our citizens, one nation, God visible, restless for all.
Okay, I believe we have a quorum tonight for tonight's meeting. Can I get approval of minutes from the previous meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 17th meeting.
Second. I have a motion due second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Can I get approval of the agenda for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda of tonight's meeting.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor. Motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on May 20th, 2025. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stoller to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of 10 minutes permitted per side for the presentations of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. We're getting into the debate agenda, new business, final plat Highland Lakes West section.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Highland Lakes West Section 1 off William Few Parkway. This shows the location of the property on the south side of William Few Parkway. And this final plat includes 55 single-family residential lots with a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet in line with the R2 zoning district, and an average lot size of 10,676 square feet. The minimum setbacks are 55 feet from the center line and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. And there is .92 acres of open space in this section, although the overall development includes much more than that. This shows the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Highland Lakes West Section 1 off William Few Parkway.
Second. I have a motion on the floor duly second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Rabbit Run Phase 2, Danielle?
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Rabbit Run Phase 2 off Cobham Road. This is the western portion of this overall development. The eastern section over here will be Phase 1. We've seen the preliminary plat on that, but not the final plat there yet. This section of the development is six larger acreage residential lots. The minimum lot size is 5.07 acres with an average lot size of 12 and 1/2 acres. And there's a seventh lot here for the existing cemetery. These are accessed via either existing road frontage or a shared easement, so there's no new public infrastructure with this plat. The required setbacks are 125 feet from the center line of Cobham Road and 10 feet from the side property lines and 25 feet from the rear property lines. And staff is recommending approval.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have approval for Rabbit Run?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Rabbit Run Phase 2 off Cobham Road.
A second. I have a motion duly seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Massage operators license, Will?
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for massage operator's license for Awaken Renewed LLC. They're relocating to 3685 Riverwatch Parkway Suite 105. They mean all requirements of the ordinance, staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve Awaken Renewed LLC relocation to 3685 Riverwatch Parkway Suite 105.
A second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Public hearing part of the agenda, rezoning from the split zone C2.
Sheriff's request for rezoning from C2 and C1 to totally C2 for the entire property located at 515 North Bel Air Road. This is the location of the property, basically right down the street from us here. Again, pretty much everything around it is zone C2. Do you have, again, the C1 we're talking about tonight, and then C1 to the south as well? There's aerial view of the site. Again, the church is not there anymore. We do have a variance request as well we're talking about in a moment. There's the site itself, again, the site from the other, the opposite end of the property. The property showing when this parcel was added in 2018. So this is the overall concept plan. We'll be talking about more with the variance. I'm not really going to focus on it at the moment. This is the area we're talking about, a rezoning from C1 to C2, based on existing zoning across the entire site. Really no issues. Could you survive with a C1 on there? Yeah, you can make it work. But it makes it easier for everybody involved, both the county and the owner, having system zoning across the entire thing. So in terms of, or just as a closer view, before we're talking about, again, about a core breaker of the site is currently zoned C1. From a future development standpoint, this is a mixed-use activity center. It does allow for, as you saw, lots of commercial development, so again, no issues going from C1 to C2 versus little piece. Staff recommends approval of the request, the reason, do you want to see it see over the entire property? Includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. Owner and applicant of Evans Out parcel station LLC would like to come forward and speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Gerald Chechester of Fox Rothschild, our firm represents the applicant. We don't have much on the rezoning. We have worked with the staff and happy to see the approval, of course, happy to answer any questions, but do want to distinguish the rezoning with the variance requests, and I'm glad that we're doing so. But myself is here and I also have a team to answer any questions that we may have tonight.
Have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this? Do I have any member of the audience that'd like to speak against this? I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 250501, rezoning the property at 515 North Bel Air Road from C1 to C2. And C2 to C2.
Second. I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Variance to this section.
Sheriff's request for some variances to the same property, this home out of 515 North Bel Air Road. We are in Evans Town Center overlay, so we do have some max setbacks we have to discuss, as well as the drive-through locations of the property. This is the location of the property, again, right down the street from us here. Currently zoned C2 and C1, everything around it, primarily C2. Aerial view of the site, again, the church has been taken down on the site itself. Again, views of the site from Washington Road and the opposite ends and the plot of the property. And the overall concept plans. So the concept plan shows subdivision of the property into three different parcels. We have Lot 1, which doesn't have any variances associated with it, basically is a small strip center on the site. Lot 2 is a bank proposed. They have a variance there for the location of the drive-through between the bank, or the building, and the street. And then on Lot 3, we have a proposed retailer-restaurant building. You have the maximum setback they cannot meet, which is right here in the middle of that pond. So we're going to kind of take one, you have a request for two of the lots. Again, Lot 1 doesn't have any requests on it. They did have a note for a third variance. We're not going to require that third variance for landscaping. We can do that with an alternate plan. So it shows the concept plan focusing on Lot 2 where they proposed bank. We do have some conceptual renderings of that. We're not really discussing those tonight. Again, we're going to focus on the site at this point. The variance here is for the drive-through location, again, within Evans Town Center. You cannot have a drive-through between the building and the street. You don't want to see things stacked up, essentially. So they have done, they've actually been working with us for quite a while on kind of trying to get to a point that's reasonable for both parties. At this point, you know, we are where we are. So again, that's what they're requesting there. Again, on the next cons, oh, excuse me, let me go back real quick. So they have also stated with kind of how this site is situated, that they've, with the angles that are created by the road itself, they don't have a ton of room to start moving things around more. In terms of the next property, again, on Lot 3, we have this max setback that's shown here, the 125, you got a five foot on the front, 125 on the back. Within that, basically that envelope created, the building's supposed to, you know, basically touch in there at some point. There's a pond there. They do propose keeping that pond, enlarging the pond itself. They're citing that, plus also topography on the site itself. That's kind of the reasoning behind why they need these two variances. From staff's standpoint with those, again, the topo is what it is. We're not, I'm not going to discredit, there's not any topo there. It's kind of a little hard, a little difficult to do that. There's definitely topography. Again, it's one that, that can be made up, though, but it is there. Our biggest concern with this is that we have a site that has been scraped. There's nothing else here. We are starting from almost whole cloth, again, we'll count the parking lot. So it's one of those that you can meet the variance, or you can meet our requirements in this situation. It is one that, it has been, there's nothing forcing this development to be this way. And that is our contention with this. Also, we're on a major intersection. It's Washington Road, North Bel Air Road in Columbia County. This is basically the center of Evans. Evans Town Center has some design requirements with it. One of those is that, you know, you don't really, you want to hide some things. You want to hide those areas that are high visibility. This pond over here is one of those that, that's a high visibility thing. So we don't really want those out in front, and so enlarging it is kind of counter to that, you know, the whole ask of Evans Town Center. So again, overall, those are the reasoning behind why we recommend this approval of this request. Terms of building elevations, Lot 1, we've worked back and forth on this one quite a bit. It meets Evans Town Center, but we'll wait to see the actual final on that. This is the Chase Bank as well. Some of that may meet, we're not going to say it's 100%. Again, staff recommends disapproval of the request. Again, we're not disapproving the elevations tonight. I just want to clarify. Those are provided just as examples, so includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. Owner, applicant, would like to add anything?
Thank you for the thorough foundational kind of introduction there. Again, Gerald Chechester from Fox Rothschild. I'd like to start with the drive-through kind of component of the variance. My understanding and our review of the criteria, we respectfully submit that we do meet the criteria for a variance. I do want to echo the sentiments regarding the topography of the lot. It's, it is tough, but we are willing and have been flexible in terms of coming up with some different alternatives. When it comes to variances and really zoning in general, your Planning Commission or your Board of Commissioners are meant to work with and collaborate with the property owner and the applicant. And I think we certainly have done that. There's been some considerable, I'm late to the game, but I think there's been some considerable back and forth, and we continue to be willing to be flexible. However, again, just how the, how the lot is set up with those two joining, I believe it's aridal roads, with the drive-through, it's tough. It's a tough location. If we could flip the building on its head, if we can turn it around, certainly we would, we would do that. But we have some suggestions. We're open to suggestions. We want to continue that communication. I think that's important. Going forward, we want to be a great focal point and a great citizen of the community. We understand that this is a highly visible corner, and we look forward to exploring those options. Possibly a screening. We also would like to possibly discuss really the, again, the way that the building is set up on the property versus if it were lower than, I guess, that street level, that would present some different issues. So again, we're flexible. I'd love for some of my team to come up and talk a little bit about that, but just happy to continue to keep the conversation going because I think we can find somewhere, we can meet somewhere in the middle on this one.
So I know, Will, you said something about elevation. Is the elevation plans to come down? Or y'all going to build on basically the hill as it stands now?
Good evening. Joel Deli Carpani with Bowler, based in Atlanta, 211 Perimeter Center Parkway in Atlanta. We're the engineers on this site, and just like to speak to these two variances kind of individually. So yes, if you do look at the site, you're generally a, across the top, pretty flat site, but when you drop down to Washington Road, you know, it's got about a 20-foot drop-off there. So first and foremost, on the bank drive-through, obviously your ordinance defines it as a, as a drive-through. What this is, in fact, is an ATM. So you're not, you don't have speakers, you don't have menu boards or anything that would typically be considered drive-through or pertinences to it. So we're all familiar with drive-up ATMs, you usually see one car, maybe two, and you're the third car you're pulling around and going inside or coming back or finding another ATM. So just to clarify what, what that is there, and it's shown on the elevations.
How many cars can be in that?
Approximately two.
Two?
Yep. Further, just, this is where the topography works in our advantage. The site does sit up above Bel Air Road. So when we provide landscaping and screening of the parking area, that's going to be on the outer edge closer to the road. So as you sit down below on Bel Air and you look up, you've got vegetated screening along that parking, that's going to extend your view shed up and over. So we believe that, you know, with landscaping and, you know, that would certainly address the intent of the ordinance. Like further, we do have a bit of a challenge of a uniquely shaped property here with that acute corner and the, and the maximum building setback and trying to situate the building so as to hit, hit both setbacks and, and provide adequate circulation in kind of a tight corner. I welcome any other questions on that one, and I'd love to speak to the.
Have you come up with any other, any other variances of the variance? Basically where you can put different things in other sites? Has that been a problem? Have you worked with the county on that?
I know we've been working with the county on several different iterations, you know, between kind of tenant requirements and also, you know, certainly the county's intent here. And we're certainly willing to continue that iterative process. But I think what we've got here is we're trying to seek the least impactful relief from your ordinances.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Good evening. My name's Quinn Gatto. I'm with Phillips Edison and Company. We're the owners of the property in question. I wanted to thank the Commission here for the opportunity and just wanted to elaborate on a couple, couple elements. So Phillips Edison and Company is owner of grocery-anchored shopping centers throughout the U.S. Approximately 300 grocery-anchored shopping centers, including Evans Town Center, just down the street from this property in question. So that's a 7,600, or 76,000 square foot public's anchored shopping center that we acquired in 2018. We're focused on being a long, long-term owner and member in this community. We want to make sure that whatever we're proposing, we get ample feedback and work with the jurisdiction to come up with a solution that's viable for all parties. What you're looking at here is the culmination of approximately a year of back and forth, working with Will and working with the rest of the planning staff to, to address a number of concerns. You see three variances here. I think, well, when we initially looked at this, we probably had 10 or 11. I mean, there was quite a bit. We've, we've gone round and round on this one. So our intention was to propose, what we attempted to conceive is the minimum number of variances that, that were feasible with the allotted design that, that we have interest in at this point. And so as Joel explained, we're working with an ATM for the drive-through variance piece. There was a question about stacking. There was two cars that we called out. You know, we can, we can dive deeper into that. There's a little bit of flexibility with that max building setback line. If, if there's a magic number, if it's, if it's three cars stacks that make this cohesive, you know, there's an opportunity there. We can evaluate that. As Joel mentioned, landscaping is definitely something that we propose to help screen this ATM. We, we really want to provide a cohesive design here, and that's our goal. By no means were we intending to come forward with any variances. So we just wanted to put our best foot forward. The, there's, we're looking for ample feedback. Any feedback that we can get, we're happy to take that into consideration.
I just know that that really, Bel Air Road at Washington Road has been the crossroads of Evans for years. I mean, I've lived in Columbia County all my life, and that was, and so you want it, it's kind of like Will said, you want it to be, you know, to be something because it gets the majority of the traffic.
Right.
In this area, all of us can sit there and every one of us has been at that lot waiting for five or 10 minutes to get through it. But I just think something needs to be there, and what you got seems to be a good plan that would look aesthetic and just look really good as the crossroads of Evans.
I appreciate that, and we've, we've put forward a couple other designs where there was, there was genuine interest, but the uses weren't such that it was fitting for the area. And so we, you know, this is, this doesn't necessarily show everything that's come to the table in terms of specific uses. I mean, we have oil change interest, you know, we passed on that. It didn't seem like it was fitting. So we've, we've really tried to work to put some, something forward that we, we would definitely want to be proud to be the owners of. And so again, we're looking for any feedback that you'd be willing to provide.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any member of the audience who'd like to speak against this? Do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of file VA 250501, variances to allow drive-through between the building and public road in Evans Town Center and removal of the maximum front setback on the property at 515 North Bel Air.
Second. I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor, right hand. Motion carries. Rezoning from RA, RA, Will?
Sheriff's request for a small rezoning on 1,900 acres from RA and RA to M1, and M1, out of S1 special for the White Oak Technology Park. This is the location of the property. Again, it is a large project, so we're dealing with a pretty large area here. And again, currently zoned RA and then RA and M1 on this piece down here. And the aerial view of the first parcel, 010006, and the one next to I-20 here, 019003. And the, along I-20, kind of the site there, next to the rest area, and the site on Morris Callaway, and the site at the end of Innovation Parkway. And the plat for the Morris Callaway property, and the one for the I-20 property. So what we're dealing with is 8 million square feet worth of data center, essentially, and big project. All the numbers I'm going to be talking about tonight are big. It's, it's a massive undertaking that we're looking at here. So again, kind of, you know, big picture of this, starting out basically at the edges. You have emergency access points on Morris Callaway and White Oak Road. Those are emergency access only. That is not for everyday access. That is only for if there's an emergency. Let's say that, you know, when, when this gets built, there's a fire back there, they can access it, you know, through there. That would not be for everyday use at all. Around the property, you're going to have a 500-foot residential building setback. Again, this is putting, oh, yes, it is technology. You're putting a use in a residential area, a rural area, that desires and needs to have protection from that use. Then when you kind of break it down into the individual buildings themselves, you're looking at basically two to six unit, or two to six building pods. Each one's about 250,000 square feet, give or take. Then you'd have a, basically a power station, a, next to each one with that. Main access will be off of Innovation Parkway here, and then also off of, name escapes me, something, this access over here as well. Then there's a third one proposed down here. That is one that we're going to have to talk about in the future. In terms of this project, it is, again, massive. We've talked about projects of this, of similar size require development regional impact. This is one of the bigger development regional impacts that we've even looked at. Part of the things to think about with this in terms of kind of what we normally look at, you know, water, sewer, traffic, that sort of thing. The water take-down on this that we've seen is absolute worst-case scenario. It is at full build-out, again, in essentially 10 to 15 years, using only one source, 6 million gallons of water a day. Now, again, that is absolute worst-case scenario. Water utility has looked at this. We've looked at the water ramp-up of this, again, only using that system. We are, have no concerns with phasing this thing over time when it comes down to that. Sewer, same boat with that. Again, no concerns. There are definitely multiple ways to accomplish this with how to pull these things down, how to handle all of that. Again, we are looking at worst-case scenario with this. But again, we are confident that it's not going to be an issue. In terms of traffic, the traffic, there actually is a traffic number on this. Usually you, something this new might not have that. It is essentially a, what is already there with, with the Amazon side of this produces three times as much traffic as this would on its own. There's not a lot of traffic with this. We are, again, not concerned about traffic with something like this. We're not talking thousands of people coming here every day at all. There's a traffic study underway with this. I mean, it's not been completed. It is mostly looking at, here are potential areas that could be impacted at full build-out. It is not something that, again, we have concerns about. So again, we're talking massive numbers with this, but it's, again, worst-case scenario. So if you look further into it, again, this kind of shows you how, we'll be developing the substations with the power. You have all the buildings themselves with that, you know, within these pods, essentially. And again, you'd have stormwater as normal. There's not any sort of allowances made that are different than other, other developments. And so if we, in terms of future development, this thing spans three different character areas. You start off at the north in rural neighborhood, go into rural, and then come down here into Activity Center. Rural neighborhood and rural probably does not say in there you can have a technology park. Now, the Activity Center, different story. It's one that, you know, we anticipate having something like this in this area. So we do, I'd say with the, with the future land use map, this does make sense to have. As well with that, we do allow for there to be basically a, a growing of a, of a character over time. In our opinion, this does that quite well, you know, basically coming off of a lot of business park and then growing in a manner in that way. Overall, again, large numbers that we're talking about, I'm sure there's going to be questions about a lot of that. Staff recommends approval of this request.
Thank you, Will. The owner's applicant Development Authority of Columbia County and owner Hart Pine Timberlands LLC would like to come forward and speak on behalf of this.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ben Dingus. I'm over here at Holbert here locally, a law firm in town, and we're representing the owners and applicants requesting rezoning of the subject property to S1 for the uses set forth in the project narrative attached to the application. In accordance with the Development Authority's statutory, statutory purpose of promoting economic development, employment opportunities, trade and commerce, they've identified this property, which presents unique and extraordinary conditions due to its size, location, availability of adequate traffic and utility. Tonight, we're requesting a recommendation of approval, and this is Chaney Eldridge from the Development Authority.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here tonight. As he said, I'm Chaney Eldridge, Executive Director of the Development Authority of Columbia County. When I started this job, on the first day, I met with county leadership, and they charged me with two things. When I started this job, on the first day, I met with county leadership, and they charged me with two things. The first was to find high-quality employment opportunities for the county and investment-heavy projects. Following that meeting, I took that mission very seriously and identified data centers as the number-one industry that we should be targeting to get that. For the next few months, I spent a lot of time with my staff and other county leadership visiting data centers across the state and meeting with the community to understand the impacts that they have in those communities. And following that due diligence, we identified that data centers and a technology park truly are the best use for this property. I have a team here to answer any questions, if you have any, but thank you so much for the opportunity to present tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have any questions?
I have a couple. Well, as far as, you were talking about the water concern, that many million gallons of water, can it be recycled in any way? Is there a way to do that to keep from having that big of an impact?
There is, and for these technical questions, I'm going to invite my engineer friends up here to talk a little bit deeper in that.
Hi, my name is Drew Frederick. I'm with Trail and Crow Company. Address is 3550 Lenox. There is a way to recycle this water, so when, so again, this is a worst-case scenario. There are other ways of cooling which would as well, but again, this is the worst case. To the water, so when these, so when this water gets in, approximately 70% of the water gets evaporated. It's part of the, it's evaporative cooling system. So, about 30% of it would go, and in most cases, it would go into a recycling, go into a cistern or to a pond, retreated and reused. It is, so there definitely would be recycling going back into.
Okay, the other questions I had too, as far as the worker traffic, I mean, how many people are going to be employed at this?
It's actually not very many for a project of this size. There's roughly about 50, 50 people per building. You'll actually see more, you'll actually see a higher traffic during the construction of it than you will for the operation of it.
Is it a 10, 15-year timeframe on building all these? Because it's a pretty big project.
A lot of it, I mean, it could be 10, it could be 50, it could be 20. A lot's going to depend on user need.
Since this is such a big project, is this like the biggest one in Georgia? I kind of thought that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll leave him alone.
Very good. Any more questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this? Any member of the audience who'd like to speak against? Oh, I got one right here.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Vin Muller. I'm an Epling resident. Neither in favor nor against, simply questions as, well. Equifer or the river?
So, right now, the county pulls from the river. So, we're, again, that is being explored, though. The aquifer could be an option. But again, right now, it's, we're focusing primarily on the first two to three buildings. How do you, how do you get those up and running first? And that would be pulling it from the river currently.
You're on the well.
Prefer to see here. And then another question with data centers, with emergency backup generators have to be tested weekly for Georgia power to potentially require during high-demand periods that data centers would run on their generators rather than pull off the grid so the rest of it. What will be done about the noise, both from the generators and from the chillers that will keep? Noise will carry. An example for noise is something is 70 decibels, and you put five of them together. It's not 70 decibels. Fortunately, it's not 350. They don't multiply, but they add. It's like when one kid jumps in a pool, there's a wave. When four kids jump in a pool, four times the size of waves, but it's loud. And even with a 500-foot buffer, the neighbors will probably hear that if all of that equipment is.
So, within their narrative, they've kind of hit, they've hit on that. They haven't, there is not an absolute, here's what the decibel limit will be at the property line, essentially. But again, they are aware of that being a concern. And it's one of those, the good thing about this in some respects is that while we are not conditioning anything with this application, the Development Authority owns the property. Again, there is the ability to put in covenants or what have you, that we can then further, you know, fine-tune that as it goes. Again, they are aware of it, but there is not a hard line, here's what it shall be with that.
And then last but not least, nighttime lighting with a facility like this, it's going to. And they will have to have access and be able to see where they're going when they're driving in buildings. Amazon has already screwed badly, so I'd like to make sure that whatever is done is down past lighting so.
Yeah, so again, similar, that's kind of handled in the narrative, but it is not absolutely specific. Again, we are aware of that concern. The county, essentially, we can require a, a.
Photometric.
Yeah, photometric, there we go. I was going to say candlelight studies, that's not right, with that. So, it's one of those that, with a project this size, we didn't want to put on it, it shall be this, you know, five-foot candles at the property line. One that we really say, we can handle this as site plan. We know it is a concern. We know we can address it as needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any member of the audience who'd like to speak against this? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ25-05-02, rezoning properties off Morris Callaway Road and I-20 from RA and M1 to S1 for the White Oak Technology Park.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, RZ25-05-03, Will?
The Sheriff's request for a rezoning for a portion of property off Ridge Road, about 10.62 acres from C2 and R4 to S1 Special for opposed boat and RV storage facility. There's a location on the property kind of in the northeast corner of the intersection of Washington Road and Ridge Road. And again, currently split zone, C2 and R4, and the same thing to the north, again, some more split zoning. Then you have some R4 to the south and RA, and then across the street, primarily R4. All the CT you kind of see up there is within a community crossroads. And then the S1 over there is actually a solar farm. Hasn't been built yet, obviously. There's the aerial view of the site, and the site itself from Ridge Road. And the plat of the property, again, very old plat. It's actually, this is the property. This doesn't even show Washington Road on it. So, they're proposing about 70,000 square feet worth of covered storage with this site. Again, it's RV and boat. We are kind of close to the lake, so it does make sense to have some RV and boat storage up that way. Again, about 7,000 square feet, you have a combination of covered and then fully enclosed. Then there's also throughout the area here, basically some outdoor parking of the same thing, also some jet skis over here. In terms of setbacks and all that, you're looking at a 20-foot structural buffer around the site on the front, and they're bumping it up to 50-foot under-stirred buffer against residential property to the north. In terms of the building concepts, again, primarily a metal building, but they are doing, sounds like some insulated metal building. But again, kind of give you an idea of what they're looking at, and also the kind of, the concepts of how they're going to develop the site overall. They do have, in terms of, we kind of talked about lighting before, they'd already discussed that as well with this. I will say this from the standpoint of the site plan and how they've approached it, the use itself. They have addressed many of the concerns you usually have with these types of things. But I don't want to say that upfront, the site plan itself is quite good. Now, let's talk about on the zoning side. So, whenever we're looking at zoning, we're looking at our comprehensive plan. In this case, Vision 2035, this shows future development of the area. We only have three different ones. Here, we have a community crossroads to the north. Again, that's primarily where you have all, you know, the storage is already there. You have a couple of gas stations. You have the rural area to the south, again, pretty self-explanatory. Then you have the Lake Neighborhood area, kind of in this orange that goes basically up to the lake itself. Within Lake Neighborhood, there is absolutely the ability to have this sort of use as an S1, says it explicitly. Now, from our standpoint, though, the ones that do exist in the Lake Neighborhood, they're primarily towards the lake up this way. There is one over here that is well over 30 years old. Primarily, what you're looking at is all of your boat storage is in this community crossroads currently. And it's one that, again, is there an argument for it? There absolutely is. However, in our opinion, the development pattern has been for, in the Lake Neighborhoods, is for these storage areas to be more towards the lake itself, not essentially on the periphery of the site itself, or of the character itself. I talked about before with the data center site, the ability for basically a character area to expand in some respects. In our opinion, in order for this to work, you'd have to expand this community crossroads. In our opinion, there's not really a reason to do that. We don't have, you know, development all through here and to bring that further down into this area. So, due to that reasoning, staff recommends disapproval of the request. That includes staff recommendation.
Owner Mary Godwin and applicant Jacob Glover would like to come forward and speak in favor.
Yes, hey, I'm Jacob Glover. I represent Meister and Marban LLC. I want to start off by saying thank you, planning and zoning, just for the time you take to put into this effort and working with us during this. As you mentioned, this is, in the 2035 vision, this particular parcel is in the Lake Neighborhood. Lake Neighborhood does give, does give distinct future land uses for the boat and RV storage. Now, the disapproval comes with a little bit of confusion, which, you know, usually does. But we see that their disapproval was based on, let's just say, 760 feet away, there was the rural crossroads community. Now, that being said, this particular parcel already aligns with what the rural community crossroads, a lot of them, a lot of the future land use already aligns with it. So, retail stores, small convenience stores and such. It already aligns with that. So, it kind of contradicts itself with that. The peripheral view, it's on, it's on the very edge of the Lake Neighborhood map. That is contradictory. I mean, the rural crossroad, and you can see there's several parcels that are on the edge. So, it just doesn't, we're a little confused on that. The low-density, used for low-density residential, this property will be developed as commercial and R4. It will be developed. Not a question of will this only be, only be used for low-density residential. It's what kind of low-density do you want? That's the question about it. That's where it's a little bit confusing for us. And then it gets down to existing Marina storage. Now, he, very rightfully so, there was and there is storage units around there, 30, 40, 50 years old. They're metal buildings with wood framing, and they serve a purpose for that demand. This particular development is not, is not looking for that demand. This is something that's very unique to Columbia County, that we feel like it's going to be a very good stronghold for Columbia County and set a standard moving forward for developments in Columbia County. And he mentions Little River Marina, which is right up, roughly a mile and a half up the street, I believe so, somewhere along those lines. Now, that is a C-plus, B-minus development. We're talking about a Class A. They just, the comparisons do not match. There's not the same demographics. But also saying that, a part of that development is based, is on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers site. And so, what we've seen, and we've looked into this on the shoreline management plan in 2018, they're basically saying that no more boat, boat houses can be developed. There's no more authorization for that. So, we know that the comparison right there just doesn't add up with the disapproval. Now, respectfully, I think there was a surface level look at it and not diving into some of the details. And that's what my job is, to dive into the details. Now, the last thing that was really confusing was the, there was, they're claiming there's not a balance between health, safety, welfare. And I very respectfully say that is the exact opposite of what this development will do. And I'll get into that and show you that in a second. So, we just, we respectful, we respect the work the county has put into this, and working with us has been great. But we are a little confused on the disapproval and such. So, let me get into a little bit about where we are and how we got here, okay? Meister and Marban LLC took on this, this development opportunity with the landowner. The landowner wants to sell the property. They thought, well, this would be a great place for potential storage, boat and RV. So, we set up a pre-construction meeting with the county. Went into the county with eight, 10 different department heads, and there was no concern for traffic, facilities. Planning and zoning was there, brought up some concerns with, you know, making sure that, gave us some advice on probably what we need to look for, and making sure there wasn't any concerns with pollution such as noise or lighting and such. So, we met with the pre-con meeting in Columbia County. There was no concerns. So, from that point on, we decided, okay, we need to go out to the community and talk to the community. We went door-to-door knocking, myself and another member of the team, went door-to-door knocking. We had some good, good conversations. We had some conversations that they felt like, hey, it's your land, you can do what you want with it. We had some conversations and said, hey, looks pretty good. I think we need it. We had some conversations that said, get off my porch now, right? So, I mean, we did. We just, we had all types of different oppositions and some friendly conversations as well. We put up QR code signs on the, on the land, on the corner. Basically, you go up there with your phone, you, you put your phone up to it, you put the camera, and it brought up the spec sheet. All the specs we have, the vision we have behind this, the layout, gave my contact information for any type of, if they have any questions, call me. We put one up, day later, it was stolen. Put another one up, day later, it was stolen, so we quit doing that. Then we, we wrote out letters to each individual in the neighborhood going down Ridge Road. We went and wrote the letters to them and let them know our vision, what it looks like, how we think it's a great add to the community. And we also let them know that we were holding a community meeting at the U-Bank Blanchard Community Center, which we did, which was very great. I mean, listen, there was a lot of opposition. Y'all know better than I do, just as good as I do. But we were able to understand what the concerns were, and so that was the main goal. What were the concerns? Can we mitigate? Can we eliminate and take care of these concerns? So, here's, here's the concerns. They're general impact concerns, and I'll say this. We went, before we even stepped foot going door-to-door, we met with the county to make sure that these general impact concerns are addressed. Because this is not going to be a good development if there is traffic, light, noise, security, value issues. Those are general impacts. So, they brought up traffic. Traffic was a concern. So, we asked our engineer, give us a traffic count. This development alone will bring less than 100 traffic trips per day, less than 100. The way it is sits right now, we said, okay, well, how, how many trips per day will it generate as it sits right now? 958. You're 10 times in the traffic if we develop it as is. Lighting, lighting's a big concern. Listen, we sat down respectfully with Pastor John Bryant. He allowed us into his home to sit down with him. We respect him for that, because we want to make sure that any neighbor and property that we took in consideration for them. And he was very polite, very generous, and very respectful, and told us he opposed it, and we respect that.
Hey, you have a minute.
Okay, and so, we did lighting. Lighting's will be positioned downward. LED lighting, zero, zero candle foot lighting, no lighting pollution. And we will have a motion sensor. Took care of that. Noise, seasonal. It's a seasonal operation. You might have your winter fishermen, campers or whatnot. So, noise is not a concern. Security, fence all the way around, magnolias, wax myrtles built up all the way around, grown up, low visibility structure. You have a coded gated access only, so whoever's going in and out, we know. You have 24/7 cameras. And before I say this, there has been no verbal, written or official or unofficial request, but we would like to put a substation in there to be able to, for those peak seasons, because safety is a concern down that way. There's, there's campgrounds, there's, there's all different types of things down Ridge Road and all around the surrounding area. The lake isn't far away. It's a mile away. So, it's not a far distance away. It's a mile away. It's right on Ridge Road. So, we took care of all that. Property value, this is the Class A facility. It's going to bring value up. This is going to be something that Columbia County. This is going to be something that Columbia County is going to be proud of for years to come. When they pull down Ridge Road, it's not going to see structures, you're going to see nice aesthetics with landscape, landscape lighting. And we just ask that you just take a look at that. You're going to hear a general impact oppositions that are going to basically say what we've already taken care of. And we just ask that now that you recognize that there's no concern with health and safety and welfare issues, because we're taking care of all that, we ask that we just, we look forward to your approval and we hope for your approval. And we just know that this will be something that Columbia County would be proud of for years to come. Let us set the standard for the tourism that's coming to Columbia County. That's what we want to do.
Thank you so much. If we have any questions?
I got one. So, I understand, your building, I mean, don't get me wrong, y'all spent some time on putting landscaping and into the building, but you hadn't addressed one thing, because that's what I was listening for you to say, and I'm sure the majority of these people are going to say the same thing.
Yes, sir.
Is the hill. Because, and I was down Ridge Road probably about three weeks ago, and when you come out of Ridge Road heading back toward Evans, you got to gun it. You better be moving. So when you think of a crew cab, F-250 pulling out there with a forty-foot camper, he can't gun it. And if you've got a log truck coming out of Lincoln County tops that hill, there was a fatality there probably about four, five years ago. To me, the biggest concern I see is that hill in front of Ridge Road.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that's the main thing.
And respectfully, I mean, that's something that we looked into, right? I mean, because when you pull it on there, there's a blind spot, there's an existing infrastructure issue. That's what we know. Now, what we can tell you is that there's already the IBW campground, there's Ridge Road campgrounds, there's people already pulling in and out of there with their boats and their RVs and everything already. And I'll tell you this.
Yeah, but you're saying that, how many vehicles a day we're going to be using that facility?
Less than a hundred.
Okay, so when you take that and then you, what you just mentioned, you pile that on top of it, eventually there's going to be a fatality there. I know it, I see it. I live in that area. I don't live down Ridge Road, but I live in that area. Those trucks coming out of Lincoln County are flying.
And respectfully, I mean, listen, I understand that completely, but that's the same thing they've been saying even without this development. That's the same thing I've heard even without this development, that people are going to die, people are going to wreck, it's just, it is what it is. Every time I've heard this, every time I pull out of there, I almost die. I've heard that same thing. Respectfully, I'm not here to say that it's not important, that safety is not an issue.
That's the biggest importance.
What I am trying to say is that no matter what, whoever's pulling in and out of Ridge Road, they're pulling out of Ridge Road, they're pulling out one at a time, and that's it. They're still pulling out one at a time. And I understand that there might-
And you understand what I'm saying, when you've got a forty-foot camper or thirty, twenty-five, thirty-foot pontoon boat, you pulling out of there.
Yeah, and that's why I say, you know, how are they doing it right now?
Well, it's, when you say, and I got it, that the majority of what lives down Ridge Road mainly keeps their boats and campers and all that on site, on their places. The only thing that would be coming out of there would probably be Ridge Road, and basically it's closed now, but, you know, would be any boat or camper coming out of Ridge Road. I just, when I, when you think about that storage, you're tripling the number of boats and campers that are going to come out of there that are great length, you know, because you don't want to haul them all the way back to Evans and Martinas.
And listen, and I completely respect. And when it comes to safety, I can't say enough, I respect it. I certainly do. The thing, the way we're looking at it is simple. You already have boats, RVs, everything being pulled coming up and down there anyways, you have it. If you can show maybe some numbers on fatalities, I haven't been able to get any, I haven't seen any, I haven't been able to get any, but you compare that to existing that's already being used for that, and then you compare it to the way it's already, it can be developed right now, we're bringing ten times the amount of traffic there?
I mean, have y'all even looked at, the same lady you're buying this from owns all four corners?
Sure.
Have you even looked at the other corner?
Well, that's a very valid point.
And I know it goes into G dot with an XL and D cell lane, and that's going to cost you, you know, a million dollars.
Not necessarily that. It is that this property and this parcel, what this parcel is already zoned or already placed, excuse me, in the guideline, in the reference of the 2035 Lake Neighborhood. But not only that, this parcel already has the ability to work in several different ways as a community crossroad, you know, community crossroad. But that, to me, this is the perfect one. If you go right across the street, either way, to the left, in front, or diagonal, it's out of the Lake Neighborhood. It's out of the Lake Neighborhood.
So, I mean, that's not even an option y'all look at, to go to the catty corner.
Again, sir, I would say that if you're saying that we can go across the street and do the same thing, you still have the same issue.
Yeah, but over there, you can put in an XL and D cell lane.
I mean, right, but I mean, you could do that, I mean, we could do that right now if that made sense financially and as the development, but, you know, it just, it doesn't make-
It wouldn't work there. It won't work on Ridge Road in XL and D cell.
All right, let me ask you this. So you're saying, your biggest concern is pulling out of there?
I bet you the biggest concern on that is the same thing.
Respectfully, I know, you're going to hear a lot of opposition on that, and I understand that, but respectfully, you're saying that the biggest concern is when you're coming out of Ridge Road, that blind spot?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I would ask that, is it okay, can I?
Absolutely.
Okay. I would ask that if that's the major concern with pulling out of Ridge Road, if we find a solution for that, would that be okay?
No.
Okay.
There, I mean, you've got no solution for it. There is no solution for it. The only solution you could have is a traffic light, and then you've got a-
That's not true. That's not true.
Okay. We have any more questions? Do you have a question, Jim?
No, that, he-
Okay.
So we did, we have been looking at options. Mr. Holloway, there's options. But I respect it, like I said, we look forward, we just want to set the standard for Columbia County. That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak in favor of this? Do I have any member of the audience who'd like to speak against this? Speak your name and address for the record, please.
I'm John Bryan. I live at sixty-four seventy-three Ridge Road. Ninety percent of my property line is right next door to this proposal. So as I first learned of it at, with a text from Mr. Glover, who just addressed you, this was on January the third, so we've been dealing with this for four months and waiting for them to make a potential application, which they did make. Grateful for each of you for your consideration tonight, grateful to you, Mr. Butler, for your team and for the extensive research that you did in the thirteen categories of explaining what could be the potential problem, what is the received opportunity that could be made of this. So I come as a resident, representing, of course, a very personal concern, but I represent a community concern, where Mr. Glover stated well from his stance that he comes with confusion, I want to come with clarity. I want to bring about some optional points in the way of understanding from the neighborhood's perspective rather than from the builder's perspective. The neighborhood perspective is, as Mr. Holloway has said, primarily the safety concern. It goes beyond just the Washington Road Ridge. It goes to the proposed entryway and exit that is, that is a part of the plan, which is to come in and out of Ridge Road. Ridge Road at the point of entry and exit is curved. It is a narrow road. We deal with not only pulling out of Ridge Road onto Washington Road, but coming in and out of the proposed structures that will invariably put them into a portion of the other lane with traffic coming in from Washington Road. So you create a traffic hazard, a potential traffic hazard at that point as well. When Mr. Glover and Mr. Meister met in my home, which I welcomed, they sent the text, and two days later, I said, yes, come, talk to me. The text was worded this way, "We have a project coming up on Ridge Road, which we would like to talk to you about." At the conversation that my son and I had, my son lives next to me along with his family, jointly together, we own seventeen and a half acres. We began this property arrangement and residential concern seventeen years ago. It was simply pine trees. We knew that we would develop it. We made an agreement with the purchase that we had, that we would keep it as it is residential, knowing that now the property that is in question for rezoning is zoned residential with a portion of it being, of course, the commercial. With that, we recognized that that buffer may not stay that buffer because it's zoned residential. I too made appeals along with other realtors and other property owners to the property owner who owns the near one hundred acres, including the four corners. There was never any response, so I was surprised when Mr. Glover and Mr. Meister said, "We are looking to put a contract on this property." I jokingly said to them, "Don't do that, sell it to me and give me an opportunity to create a buffer. That's not going to happen." The four concerns that my son and I raised at that initial meeting were these: sound, security, site, and safety. Safety being the greatest concern. The article, of course, it appeared recently in the paper, in the Augusta Press, accentuated the crunching of gravel, the doors opening and shutting. When I began to talk at that initial meeting, I said, "Look, guys, lighting is a major concern. I mean, my bedroom's right here, my barn is right here, my driveway follows the entire line of your entire construction area." And their willingness to say, "Okay, well, we'll put in motion lights." When I think about that and what I addressed at the Eubank Blanchard meeting that they called was, what joy that will be when the lights come off and on as people come in and out. And I know that they were sincerely trying to address the concern at that point. But as we begin to look at it, and as you may hear from others within our community, the clarity can come at the point of just simply thinking not only in terms of the long-term effect of putting commercial buildings on a residential area that Mr. Glover has said will ultimately all become commercial. That projection, I think, is hypothetical and I think unreasonable as well. Construction will bring about what we've seen. The horrific damage of the hurricane, all we've seen coming up and down Ridge Road now for six months have been log trucks coming in and out, the cleanup of the debris, and then here we are beginning to tear down the trees, whether they be chipped or logged, they will be cleared, there will be construction trucks coming in and out. And of course, that's a part of all construction, we recognize that. My property has been zoned for these seventeen years as a conservation area, including bird sanctuary, agricultural with the animal life that we have in forestry. It will remain that way. That's been my commitment. My commitment is not to put an apartment complex or anything differently in there as well. The ecosystem has already been dramatically impacted in the context of the torn-down trees, the continued trees that are laying on the road, off the road, close to it. FEMA's done a good job of trying to get those at the road, but it's already looking like a disaster area. We respectfully submit to you our great concern for three hundred and fifty new units to be put here. As beautiful as they may be planned, they are still commercial buildings, there will still be traffic, there will still be safety concerns, there will still be sound and site concerns, and there will still be security concerns. So I respectfully submit that to you as a property owner and as a part of the entire neighborhood. And I too have been around knocking on doors, talking to people, and thankfully, I have not been asked to get off the front porch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Do I have any other member who'd like to speak against this?
Good evening, I'm Julia Harrison. I live at fifty-two Chigo Lane, I'm off Fernsyking, so I'm two and a half miles down Ridge Road. So I'm speaking from not the next-door neighbor, but someone a little farther down, a lot of my neighbors who are here tonight. I believe, I want to thank Will, he took the time to attend the meeting that was hosted on February eighteenth. We got some information, we had a lot of questions, but the neighbors of the Ridge Road area, many that are present tonight and others that could not be here, completely agree with your recommendation for disapproval. We have submitted a petition that I believe was sent to y'all, at the point it had a hundred and seventy signatures, it now has two hundred and seven. Copy for that if you like it. We agree that the request does not meet the intent of the Vision 2035 Future Development Map. There are probably two builders in the group behind me that would happily purchase the residential portion of the property and build four houses just like that, if they were given that opportunity. There are also other commercially zoned properties available for the special use. At sixty-four sixty-seven Washington Road, which is about a quarter mile down toward where we are today, there's seven point two-two acres that's already zoned commercial. So there are other places that could be used for this that are, that are commercial. Of course, that is on Washington Road, and then you would have to deal with D dot, XL, D cell lanes. The traffic and safety concerns, those are a big concern of ours, even now with the trees that are down from Hurricane Helene. You have to pull over, I drive a mid-side SUV, I have to pull over the road when the boats are coming, when the campers are coming. It's a narrow road. Ridge Road is extremely narrow, it's extremely windy. So there are hazards there. The hazards, as you said, Mr. Holloway, is the Ridge Road and the Washington Road intersection. Nobody's really looked at that. We had a neighbor who went out and went, filmed from the top of the hill, it going sixty-five miles an hour, it takes five seconds to get from that hill to Ridge Road. There is no way a boat can even cross Ridge Road in five seconds. They're going, somebody's going to get hit, and it's going to be bad. It's three miles to the lake, because it's two and a half miles to my house, and currently, there's no public boat ramp at the end of Ridge Road. The campground is closed, but when the campground is open, you can only put your boat in if you are staying at the campground overnight. You have the Presbyterian Center there, and then you have the VFW. So it's not like you're going to have people using it to go, it's not Wildwood. Let's move this down to Wildwood, because that's where your public boat ramps are. We have a lot of other concerns, and we're happy to address if you'd like them, but we are thankful for the disapproval. Definitely agree with you.
Thank you so much. Do I have any other member who would like to come and speak against this? And just, we'll keep it down to five minutes. Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend disapproval of our RZ two-five oh-five dash oh-three rezoning from R4 to C2 to S1 for a portion of Tax Mac, oh-two-four parcel oh-five-seven off Ridge Road.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, and duly seconded, all those in favor? Raise your right hand. Do I have any legal matters tonight?
Not tonight.
Thank you. Any staff or commissioner comments? Any public comments or participation further? None? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, all those in favor?